Good evening and welcome to the Putnam Valley Board of Education Business Meeting of October 24th, 2019. Please stand and join me as we salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So, first order of business, I'd like, resolved to approve the minutes for the work session business meeting of October 10th, 2019.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, moving right along into presentations, and it's always important when we talk about safety, in school bus safety. Dr. Luff, take us away.
Sure. So, we have a representative here from the Putnam County Sheriff's Office, First Sergeant Meyer, is here to talk a little bit about school bus safety, and he's a member of the Traffic Safety Board. Welcome. Thank you.
Yes, please.
Yes, you have to go up there.
There's no microphone there. Don't worry, there's like thousands of people watching on the cameras at home.
But there's no microphone there.
Does he need a microphone, Ms. Meyer?
I press your hand. I think we're going to run.
No, that's all needs a microphone.
We need to hear it.
The throngs.
Okay. They need to turn it off.
Oh, really? Time out. We're good. Set you up. Captain Bill Meyer, I'm representing the Putnam County Traffic Safety Board. We're an advisory board. We deal with traffic safety issues throughout Putnam County. We're comprised of state DOT representatives, local town representatives, town highway departments, and law enforcement. And we basically meet several times a year, and we basically deal with traffic safety issues throughout the county. Anyone can come, anyone can bring an issue to the board. One of the things they wanted to do was go out to all the school districts and just make them aware of the Traffic Safety Board, how it relates to bus safety, encourage school districts to use the state form. Anytime a car passes a stop school bus with the red lights on, there's a form the bus driver can fill out with the information of the vehicle, the make, model, license plate number, location. They send that back to the state. That data is important for funding and for changing the laws, for improved laws on school bus safety. So, we encourage them to do that, most of them do. You can also give a copy to the school SRO, who can follow up on that if it's a dangerous situation. So, we really want to make that, you know, something that people are aware of. And we, you know, I like to think we're one of the driving forces behind the Pudding Street overpass. We were involved with that. And anytime you have a traffic safety issue, especially related to bus safety, you know, you can bring it to the Traffic Safety Board, and we do have, you know, significant resources to address it.
Could you share some of the other types of issues that people bring before you? So, obviously, the Pudding Street overpass and passing the stop school bus. Is there other types of issues, just so people are aware of the types of things that you guys handle?
Sure. We, they bring issues to us, traffic-related, traffic lights that aren't timed correctly that cause dangerous situations, intersections that need a traffic light, passing zones that are unsafe, unsafe areas where the, just something simple, where the brush needs to be cut back on the road to make it safe. Those are all examples of things that, these are not huge complicated issues, but these are things that we can easily advise the right people. We have people from the state DOT that we can, we can forward this information to, and they can act on it, or a local highway department.
Certainly got my attention with the stoplight timing, because if you can get me a remote to control the one in front of the building here, that would be useful. It would save Dana a lot of time as well. And traffic lights, again, we would love to get one in front of our elementary schools. I might just have to come to a meeting.
Right, yeah, these are all things, and a lot of things are regulated by the state, by the DOT. And we have a representative there that basically can tell you, all right, these are the rules, these are how you get this done, this is what makes this happen, it has to meet a certain criteria, if it doesn't, then they're not going to do it.
Yeah, so, I am not necessarily a see-something, say-something, you know, complainer, follow buses and call them, but is there a way that a driver can find out what general bus safety is? Say, I was behind a bus that made a three-point U-turn rather than go all the way around. It seems to me making a U-turn with a bus full of children is not the world's best idea in a little residential street, but I don't know if it's not, well, is there a phone number or a listing, or?
I would say, I would reach out to that school district, there's a manager that runs the bus garage that, and they would have, they would know what the, what the rules are for a bus.
In various places, right.
If that's allowable, if that's not, if it's recommended, if it's not recommended. A lot of times, they, what they do is out of necessity, but I'm sure you could find that out through the district's garage.
I mean, just knowing the area it was, it seemed like it was a way to make the route shorter rather than going a very convoluted way all the way around.
Right.
Just make a quick U-turn, but I didn't think it was the world's best place to make a U-turn in a bus.
Right, and if that's a dangerous situation, I would first just address that with the district.
Okay.
How do people know when there's the avenue for, are we able to have that, to bring their issues, as far as location, times, as it's said?
We have a website, I believe there's a website, and they post the meetings, the dates, and the times we meet. I think five times a year at the Sheriff's Office. It's open to the public, it's at 4:00 PM. I can have the traffic safety, she's like our administrator, she could put out an email to the districts, and then you could forward those.
That'd be great.
Is that the PutnamCountyNewYork.gov website?
I believe there's a link, that's the county website, I believe there's a link to the Traffic Safety Board website, and they post the meeting dates and times.
Okay.
Did, if I'm remembering correctly, was there just past the summer, the camera law for the red, for the stop signs on the buses where that's allowed now?
Yes. I know Orange County is adopting a local law where they're going to attach cameras to the buses, and if somebody passes the stop school bus, they will issue the ticket. They'll issue a local summons. That's something that I believe Putnam County is looking into as well.
Anything else?
Other questions?
Thank you very much. Thanks for taking the trip out.
Thank you for putting us now, appreciate it.
Take care now.
Thank you.
All right, so we're moving to our last and final opening school report.
Yes, so we'd like to welcome Dr. Ntrieri and Mr. Matt Mello to come present the update on Putnam Valley High School. Thank you.
Take a foul.
It feels like we started this eight hundred years ago.
Good evening, everyone. I'm very pleased to also have Mr. Mello, our new Assistant Principal, here with us tonight, and I'm also pleased to see our high school representatives for the Board of Education. We have Brianna and Julianne tonight, so I'm happy they could be here to see our presentation and comment from their perspective. From my perspective, it's been an extremely smooth start to the high school this year. It's already our third year of the block schedule, it's our second year of the late start, our second year of the community lunch. So, for this year, for us not having a major structural change has been a very refreshing opening for us, nice and smooth. And we are, before we get started with what's new at the high school, I thought, we've put in all these new initiatives, we've put in the block scheduling, we've put in the community lunch, we've looked at these different things, let's see what the students think about what's happening.
Bring this one.
So, first we looked at, because the late start was a very important initiative for the high school, and we put that in place because we were concerned about the amount of sleep that students were getting each night. And so, I asked 11th and 12th graders, because the 9th and 10th graders haven't had no exposure to an early start, they've always started school at 7:50. So, I put out a survey to the 11th and 12th graders and asked them, on average, how many hours of sleep do they get per night? And we could see here that most, out of those who answered, 112 here, get between six and seven hours sleep. And the recommended number is between nine and 10. And we can see out of the students who answered this survey, only 16 students are getting the recommended amount of sleep. But what was most concerning was five hours or less out of this survey. Forty-seven students are getting five hours or less of sleep a night. So, that means each night, they're losing four to five hours. By the end of the week, they are thoroughly sleep deprived. Before we went to the late start, I asked what time on average did they wake up, and we could see here that many students really typically woke up between 5:30 AM and 6:30 AM. That was the majority of students in that hour. Since we've moved to the later start, most students are getting up between 6:00 AM and 7:00 AM. So, just from that quick little survey of the students, we could see that, on average, many students are getting about 30 minutes more sleep a night, which is, it's good, that's what we wanted when we instituted the later start. Now, I didn't ask them, why are they getting five hours or less of sleep? Is that because they're up gaming, up on their cellphone, up doing homework? So, there's more research that could be done from this. Then I asked the 11th and 12th graders, but what time do you prefer to start school? And the majority, 112, said they still preferred the early start, and I think that's mostly because we have a lot of students who play sports, a lot of students who have jobs after school, and a later start does cause conflict for them in the afternoon because, you know, either they don't have time to have something to eat before sports begin, or they have to race to get to their job. So, I, you know, like everybody in the United States today, or I guess in the globe, society is very, very busy. Everybody is overscheduled, and that includes our students, who are doing many different things per day. So, for those people who are very busy, the later start has had an impact on them. However, I'll be curious to see two or three years from now, when we survey students, and if we said, well, how would you feel about going to a 7:10 start? I have a feeling none of them would want to do that. I asked student perceptions of the community lunch, how are they feeling about it, do they like it, et cetera? So, we could see a majority of the students like it, five was the highest they could say, one was the lowest. There are about 14 students, about a little less than 5% who don't really care for it, but that shows an overwhelming majority like the community lunch. I asked how they commute, how they utilize the community lunch besides eating. 132 students marked getting extra help from a teacher, spending time with friends, 280. And while that may seem like a negative, I think that's a positive, because what do we want from this generation? We all worry and complain that students are on their phones too much, that they don't have face-to-face contact with each other, that they don't know what to do in their spare time. And this is actually time during the day when they can make their own decisions, they are not scheduled in, they can interact with their friends, have those face-to-face conversations that we all think are so important. Some go to a club, 125, and then work on assignments and studying, we work on assignments, 79, and then also the studying there, we have 231. And then about 20 students, which is accurate, go to BOSI's. So, they're doing a variety of things, and if you come and visit the community lunch and you go down to the gym, it is one of the most miraculous things you could ever see. I don't know whether you two girls have gone, but there must be 125 students down there, shooting basketballs, running around, playing soccer, kicking balls around, sitting on the bleachers, and a lot of 9th and 10th graders run to get their lunch so they can get in and play basketball. So, it's really provided a lot of physical activity that I think is very beneficial for some students who are not, have difficulty sitting all day. And not that I want to talk about discipline, but it is interesting to note, in 2017, I counted up, there were 175 referrals for disruptive activity. That could be anything from a major insubordination, student getting in trouble from a teacher for being disrespectful and loud, or, it could be a whole variety of incidents. And in 2018, after we instituted the community lunch, we were down to 50 disruptive referrals for disruptive activity. So, that is a major change. And this year, we've probably had one, maybe two, and while I think Mr. Mello's doing an awesome job as the new Assistant Principal, I'm going to say that maybe there's fewer referrals because of the systems we've put in place, and not necessarily because all the students think he's mean and afraid.
But that would be fine.
We also looked at the freshman transition, because one of the areas that definitely we have found over the years that students struggle with, struggle with, is that transition from 8th to 9th grade. As we know, as 8th to 9th graders, their brains are growing more during those years than they are when they're toddlers. There's a lot of change and development going on. So, we asked the 9th graders, 109 answered, how did you feel about your transition to the high school? And we could see here, a majority, four or five, felt it went very smoothly. Then we asked, what were the challenges? I was most worried about, and what I thought about a lot over the summer, was how was I going to help 9th graders adjust to the community lunch? Because that could be very overwhelming for coming to a new school, and then everybody has lunch at the same time. So, I'll talk about big buddies later that we instituted to help with that, and to my surprise, they were not too concerned with the community lunch. They were concerned with the amount of homework and tests and the adjustment in classes, 52 students. Some noted building relationships with adults. I've heard this comment a lot this year, building relationships with the upperclassmen, and the schedule, which of course is the six-day cycle. And again, how do they feel about the community lunch? For the most part, they feel overwhelmingly like it's going well, and they found their niche very quickly. I asked how many freshmen joined a sport or club this year, which was 72%, which is, you know, what we like to see, if we can get that even higher, that would be great. And we wanted to know, do they have at least one adult in the building that they can go to if they have a problem? Fifty-three kids said they definitely did. About 34% were neutral, so we'd like to change that, so they feel they definitively have someone, and we're going to be talking about that at the next faculty meeting. And then the 11% strongly disagree. So, there's about 10 to 12 students out there who really need some sort of connection with an adult. Onto our Regents data, as we can look at it, our numbers are very similar over the years, from 2016 to 2019, of the total number of students tested. We're still in global history. In 2016, we tested 135, 148, 146, we're still at 148 for 2019. So, they're very similar across the board, geometry, 112, last year it was 120, Common Core English, 135 to 138. And when we look at the passing rate, it's very similar as is to the numbers. There's not much difference, up or down, it basically has stayed the same, sometimes some years up a little, some years down a little, but overall, we're not thoroughly satisfied with our Regents grades. In some classes, they're satisfactory, but in other areas, we would like to see them improved, and we are working on that. Our mastery rate, again, very similar to the passing rate, where it has basically stayed the same, gone up and down, depending on the year, but again, very similar to what it has been. And again, this is something we are working on, and one way we are addressing these scores and achievement is through the implementation of the IB program this year, which is very rigorous, and really, I think, helping everybody evaluate so that they have higher expectations in the classroom. One thing that we are very, very proud of, and I really want to congratulate the team, is if you look at our 2018 graduation rate for Hispanic students, so this is Putnam County, and we could see over here at the legend, the dark green, 96%. So, Putnam Valley High School had the best graduation rate out of Putnam County, and the other schools, you know, we could see here Carmel, Mayapack, Brewster, the green, lighter green was a little bit lower than us, and then the yellow, a little farther below. But that is something that we should really be proud of, because today, really what's important is how are we reaching those subgroups in our population? How are we creating equity for all students? And it really shows that the team, and Mrs. Nelson is doing an excellent job helping our team reach this subgroup. And I'm proud to say, for the first time, Putnam Valley High School was a reward school, and I put a little quote here that's taken from the reward school site, and it says, "The teachers and administrators at recognition schools have taken to heart the critical mission of educating the whole child." And I really do agree that's something that our high school has taken very seriously. We have great relationships with students and really work to try to get everybody to The College Board, one of the things they focus on is, again, access and equity. So, how are we helping all students achieve more rigorous levels of education and challenge all students? In our graduating class, we had 25% about seniors who scored three or higher last year, but over their career, there's about a third of the class that has taken an AP exam and gotten a score of three or higher. So far, in the 11th grade, it's about 28%, and in the 10th grade, it's about 17 to 18%. So, again, we'd like to see this number increased as we begin to implement IB exams. Moving on to this year, our enrollment, we can, we've stayed pretty steady at the high school. While the population is beginning to drop with the current 9th grade, we still have fairly good class sizes, 142, 142, we just graduated, we have our next senior class of 144, 142, the 10th grade, a little bubble there, 156 and 131. So, we're staying pretty consistent at the high school. And our, what we're most excited about this year is the IB program and how we are basically implementing IB for all students. So, it's not for a small group of students, it's for everyone. All 11th graders are taking IB English at the standard level. And I think this is very important, because we have been working on systems to make it more equitable for all students. We've been really working on attendance. Our attendance rate went, our attendance rate went from 96% to 97%, which means that students with 10 or more absences decreased. So, we have fewer students who are absent 10 or more days, and that's one of the reasons why we were recognized as a reward school. And so, now we're looking at other ways we can raise achievement, and the IB program is one method that we're going to use for that. The faculty got together at their last meeting, and we talked about, what are students struggling with in the 12th grade? What are they having most difficulty with, with the new IB curriculum? And they talked about students having difficulty with the amount of reflection they have to do, the amount of writing they have to do, the amount of supporting details they have to provide, understanding and explaining the why behind what they're learning. So, there's a lot of challenges going on, and we're working at ways to, to help them reach those higher levels. Our coordinators this year are Mr. Lathrop and Mr. D. Gregorio. We have two coordinators for our extended essay, Ms. Demain and Ms. Thornton, and then we have our CAS advisors, which is the Creativity, Action, and Service piece, Mr. Elsasser and Ms. Billy, and they're all working together to help support students throughout this program. Mr. Mello is our IB administrator, and he's really overseeing all six of them as a team, and I'm going to pass it over to him to talk a little bit more about how the program's rolling out.
All right, thank you. So, I think, you know, we're in a really good place as we start this IB program. There are 17 IB diploma candidates currently in the 11th grade. So, when we talk about like the extended essay, the CAS, you know, component to it, 17 of our students are fully involved in all of that. So, we're real happy with that. We didn't know where that initial number would be, and we think that the excitement and everything, you know, in the following years, should bring that number up even more. So, very excited about it. And what we really like is, you know, Ms. Ntrieri mentioned all these coordinators that are involved in it. Their excitement, you know, and passion for the program is something that's going to help elevate and help those students succeed as they go through the diploma program, because it can be quite daunting. And now, on top of that, we are going to, we have a couple IB exams this year. The IB program is quite elaborate, so there are diploma candidates who go through this full, I don't know what we'd call that, pathway, to an IB diploma. But then there's other students that can take IB courses. So, we have 62, 60 students this year that will be taking IB courses in chemistry, biology, and psychology. That will culminate in what they call an external assessment at the end of the year. And then, most of the other students that are involved, there's a lot more students that are taking IB courses, but their exams won't happen until year two of their program. So, the overwhelming majority of the students that we have involved now, which are juniors, will be taking their exams next year as seniors. A couple of things I also wanted to point out, we still do offer AP exams, because that's one of the things, we get these questions all the time about AP exams. We do have AP exams, we have 144 students taking 210 AP exams. So, we are not eliminating AP exams, and, you know, there are several other options for students who want to challenge themselves and take AP exams, to be able to do that, even if they're enrolled in an IB course. The other thing that I want to point out is that the registration process for AP exams has changed. College Board changed their process. So, where you used to be able to register for AP exams all the way up until like March, April, College Board does not allow that anymore. It's an online registration. The overwhelming majority of our students have registered in their classes in school. I think we might have like six or seven stragglers that still need to register, but that's already done, it has to be done by November 15th, as well as the payment process. So, our school district, we use total registration for parents to be able to pay for the AP exams. They can do that online, mail in a check, so it expedites that process rather than students having to bring in checks here to the high school. So, that all needs to be done by November 15th. I've sent out a couple of connect ads about that already, and hopefully, you know, we're moving in the right direction, which I think we are as far as that's concerned. So, I just wanted to point out that the AP registration process has changed from where it was in the past, so I'm hoping, I'm hoping we're all good with that moving forward. The IB registration process is different from the AP, and so I've gotten a couple questions about, you know, well, you know, I can't sign up on College Board for IB, I don't understand this, and it's separate, they're two totally different entities, and we have to register the IB students ourselves. So, we have to actually go into the program and upload the information ourselves, students can't go and register on their own for that. I think that's, and there'll be a connect ad going out about the payment process for IB exams, but we have a little bit more leeway as far as that's concerned. IB students needed to be registered by November 15th as well, and that's all been taken care of.
I just wanted to say a few things about the AP-IB situation. So, we fully believe as a team and as a school, we've embraced the total IB philosophy, we believe in the learner profile, that all students should be risk-takers, and balanced, and reflective, and all the different qualities that they list. So, we've really embraced the whole program, and I think that's been very beneficial for the school. We have 17 diploma candidates, 17 pushing through that really rigorous program, and then we also have many, many students taking all sorts of IB classes, and we only anticipate that that will increase over time. Where, if you look at a neighboring school that also has the IB program, that's twice our size, I think they've only had like two diploma candidates, because it's not the same, they're not embracing the program in the same way. So, I'm really proud of all the team does, and again, it's really led to a lot of conversation about curriculum and, and how we're really striving to, to help kids think more critically.
All right, so, this summer, I had the opportunity with a couple other administrators, some other teachers, to go to an IB, their world conference down in New Orleans, and it was like, there's a lot of different things that I was able to take out of that conference, and I'll tie in a couple of these things in a second. But one of the things, Dr. Ntrieri and I were in one of these breakout sessions, and, you know, in there, they talked about how you involve the whole school, you know, in, you know, not necessarily just the IB process, but in like a theme, and then you kind of can weave that, work it in all year long. So, we looked at that, the one, the example that they used last year was the 50th anniversary of Woodstock. So, the school used that as their major theme. So, we started thinking about that, and Dr. Ntrieri and I kind of like, you know, grew up at the same time and kind of went through the same experiences in different parts of New York here, but we were very affected by the Cold War, as I think many of you were as well. And, you know, 1989 was the fall of the Berlin And, you know, 1989 was the fall of the Berlin Wall. And so we thought that was like, you know, an excellent opportunity for us to use to kind of roll out to the faculty and use that as like our overriding theme for the year. You know, how do we break down walls? Why are walls built? All these kinds of questions. At a faculty meeting, was it last month? You know, we broke them up into different groups, you know, they're different, you know, science, math, all. And, you know, we threw out there, "Okay, Berlin Wall, what can you do in your subject area with the Berlin Wall?" And we kind of left it up to them to come up with all these different suggestions on what they could do with the Berlin Wall. I know like Ryan Odell Music Department, you know, looking at, "Oh wow, is there, you know, some sort of piece that they can take from that time period?" I know there was a couple. My suggestion was the Scorpions, "Winds of Change", you know, but kind of like a metalhead. I don't know if that's the song they're going to play, but the German Philharmonic actually played that piece. So, you know, all the different departments are kind of running with that idea and weaving it throughout the school year. So everybody's going to kind of use the Berlin Wall in different ways. You know, we're talking about the Berlin Wall, and, you know, it just so happens that walls are kind of like in the forefront of things going on in our country. And so we're not making a statement about, you know, what's going on with walls in our country, but it's an excellent opportunity for, you know, students to engage or teachers to engage with students, you know, about, you know, what's going on in our own country, you know, as far as that's concerned. So a lot of different things that they can work in there. And the other thing that we talked about is, you know, the Berlin Wall, when it was coming down, it was the, you know, people of East Germany, of East Berlin, that were really making a statement to their own government that, you know, what, "We're sick and tired of being segregated from our own people." And it was really led by the people. They were empowered to go and break down that wall themselves. So, you know, empowerment is what really kind of drove, you know, all of this. How do we empower our students with anything in their lives? Do you have any walls that you're facing that you need to get over through whatever in your own life? And how do we empower our own children to deal with those kinds of walls? So, you know, that's really where the whole school-wide theme came from. We were like, oh, I'll throw one more thing in there, and I thought this was like unbelievable. We had the JCK Foundation in here last week, and they were doing this whole thing about empowerment. It's a Legends Program, and it has to do with like mental health and, you know, things that people can do, you know, to recognize that they might have mental health issues, you know, or recognize that other people might be dealing with mental health issues, and then how can they help one another? And one of the things they talked about was voice, you know. We need to find, you know, students need to find and understand that they have a voice, and they need to be able to be empowered to use that voice, whether you're dealing with an issue yourself or whether you recognize that somebody else is dealing with an issue. You know, understand that voice. And I think it's really interesting, because one of the keynote speakers at the conference in New Orleans, you know, talked about, you know, how students need to find the voice. Her name escapes me. Woodson, that's right, Jacqueline Woodson. And she's a writer, and she writes children's books. And, you know, so she used one of her books, and it was about a student new to a school that felt isolated, and it was about her finding her voice. So I just thought that this was amazing, that this group that we brought in, we never talked about voice at all, but they were talking about the exact same thing there. So it kind of falls right in line with what we want to do this year with empowering students. Find your voice, break through those barriers, and help one another, you know, as we move forward. And that will help when we think about mental health, which ties in with our administrative theme this year. You know, how do we recognize that, help people, and overcome these difficulties? So it kind of all ties in, and I thought that was great. Not that we even planned to do that. Oh yeah, so the other thing with the IB program, Group 4 is the sciences in IB. And so Group 4 has to have a project, you know, that they've got to complete throughout the year. So all the Group 4 teachers, you know, teaching IB courses, and they'll branch out to the other science teachers, are going to tackle Chernobyl. So again, we talk about 1989, the fall of the Berlin Wall, and just before that, you had this major incident, you know, probably the worst nuclear incident that we've seen that happened in Chernobyl, which is in the Ukraine, which was behind the Iron Curtain. And so they chose that. I think it's timely too, because last year there was a whole, was it Netflix series or something like that? Or HBO that dealt with Chernobyl, and it was a very powerful piece. So they're going to, in the Group 4, develop their project, their Group 4 project this year, around what had happened at Chernobyl.
Thank you. Something else we're doing this year, which we just implemented, and it's to help with the freshman transition, is the Big Buddy Program. And that's a group of seniors, we have about 30 seniors at this point, who are working with Ms. Penta and Ms. De Siena. And they, it was wonderful, if you saw on the first day of school, they had all the freshmen in the gym. They were broken up into small groups with their big buddy. And the big buddies were walking them through all different pieces of information about themselves. They had questions for each of their little mentees, and it was really, really, I thought, very positive. This is a program we would like to see grow. We kind of got it off the ground late in June last year, so there's a lot more we can do with it to really make it a special and unique program where seniors feel like they're very special for being a part of the program and where 9th graders really feel like it helps them adjust to the high school. My really, my number one goal for these big buddies was, just please help the freshmen adjust to the community lunch. Make sure they have some place to sit on the first few days of school, because that is something I definitely was worried about. And they did a great job, because really, it's been smooth. I wanted to talk briefly about the TV studio. I'm very pleased to say that Ms. Shutz has been working with Mr. Mahoney in the TV studio this year. This is a new team, and she has infused brand-new life and vigor and ideas into the program. And they just finished their first ninth show episode today. And it's on Empowerment Week, so there's a whole running theme through the episode that she has. Some things serious, some things that kids are allowed to do, a little bit of humor, like, you know, "Who's your favorite superhero and why?" And then she's also running the IB Film Year One Program, where they're doing lots of writing about certain pieces. And then they're also learning the technical side, training in camera angles, proximity, positioning, symbolism. So again, if you ever want to come in and visit, it's really a wonderful thing to watch. And as Mr. Mello said, we're also focusing this year, of course, on connection and community. And we brought in the JCK Foundation. So they're actually, I know one of them from a previous teaching position, and he approached me about this program that they do on mental health. And they'd done it in several colleges, and they wanted to start branching out to high schools. So we brought them for 11th and 12th graders, just because of the nature of their work. We kept it for the upperclassmen, because really, even though we're one school, sometimes you have to have different programs for the 11th and 12th graders and different ones for the 9th and 10th graders. So the 9th and 10th graders, we're going to have green chimneys come in, and they're going to do small-class lessons in the 9th and 10th grade academic studies right before lunch. And then we had this assembly last week. And they started with, they had everybody in the auditorium. They broke them up into small groups, and they asked questions like, "What does mental health mean to you?" They asked them survey questions that they looked at. Did they have an adult they could feel that they went to? It was just kind of like a beginning kind of orientation session. Then they brought them back sixth period for a film, and then, that was very powerful. And then after that, they broke into small groups in the cafeteria, where our counselors also, and some of the other teachers in our building led groups. And they talked about all sorts of issues that affect teenagers and adolescents, and how could we help them? I think overwhelmingly, what, the program went very well, but I think one thing that everybody is kind of thinking about since this program, because overwhelmingly, students said they're still afraid to reach out for mental health support, because they don't want to be criticized by their peers. And that's something that we really have to think about. And that's a community issue, that we have to think about how to make students more comfortable so they can receive the supports that they need. Some of the feedback, and we got lots of it, which I can provide for you later, but we had an outside counselor call the school and tell a story about how one of the students they see said that this program was life-changing for this kid. Another student wrote, "I loved the breakout experience. I felt it really helped in creating open and positive dialogue about mental health. I felt great being able to talk to my friends and classmates in a safe environment. It made me feel very different due to the fact that other people were voicing their struggles just as I would voice my own. It was a very different experience, and actually, it makes me consider group therapy." And then, since then, some people have reached out to our counselors saying, "Well, they would like their parents to know that they struggle with this, and could you talk to their parent about getting them to a physician or some kind of support so they could start working on that?" So it started to really open the dialogue, and I think the group had really good energy. And when we talked also to the students, you know, I think they thought, "Oh, this is going to be lame, another assembly, like, going to be boring." But really, they came back with some positive feedback. And I think especially, they did, the group enjoyed working with the seniors, just because they know they are going off to college next year, and that's more real to the seniors, where maybe the juniors had a little bit of hesitation, and they were the first to go. And then what else is ahead this year? We have Digital Portfolios Year Two. Last year, Mrs. Domain worked with all the freshmen in those academic studies to help them build resumes. And Mr. Mahoney, I believe, built the template for the digital portfolio. And so now this year, they're going to start looking at rubrics and looking at the important pieces that they could pick to put in their digital portfolio so that when they're seniors, they have a nice portfolio for college admissions. One Act Plays will be returning for Year Two. November 15th, we have Frank Guglieri, who's the regional safety person from BOSI's. He'll be coming and doing two assemblies on the dangers of vaping. Because while we've all heard lots of things on the news about students getting sick and students getting ill, unfortunately, we know that vaping is still rampant and that kids buy a lot of things online, and the products that they're buying online are not safe, and they're the ones tampered with. So we're going to bring him in to really talk to the students. Almost Main is coming up the beginning of November, our drama presentation. We have another assembly coming up in the winter on drinking and driving. Our Color Wars, everybody's starting to count down and get ready. And about two years ago, we changed and we separated homecoming from Color Wars, because the two kind of overlapped, and kids didn't have a lot of energy for homecoming or they didn't have a lot of energy for Color Wars. So we separated it out, but now homecoming has become a little flat. So I told the kids that this year, we're going to plan together, we're going to work together, and we're going to bring winter homecoming to Putna Valley. So winter is coming, and it's going to be big this year. We're going to have a big winter celebration. Any questions?
A lot. Did you forget about IB as your one year without big initiatives?
I know, I thought of that when I came here.
So that is my question. You have 17 diploma candidates, which is amazing. We were looking at maybe five or six. So that's far more than I had thought. And that doesn't mean it's all going to go up, but at least they are diploma candidates. And every 11th grader is taking IB English. Is IB, do the coursework begin in junior year? Or is that just because we started it mid?
No, the diploma program is specifically for 16 and 17-year-olds. And then IB has a middle-years program, which is 6th through 10th grade. And then they have a primary-years program.
So we're just doing the...
It would be easier for us if we could start some of the programming in 10th grade, so that kids could fit more into their schedule and do, you know, the different requirements.
And is there, I hate, there's so much wonderfulness in this presentation, and I'm going to be a naysayer. Not really a naysayer. Are there clear distinction between the six coordinators? I mean, it sounds like there's six individual coordinators. You know, our job appears to look at the spending, and are we getting bang for our buck? And is there overlap? Is there clear description of what each person does?
So really, what IB does is they have, technically, the principal's called the head of school. Then they have an IB administrator, that's Mr. Mello. And then they usually have a diploma program coordinator. That person can range from anywhere from having one period off a day to four periods off a day, depending on the size of the program. And then what we decided to do, because this is new to all the teachers and to all the kids, and I really felt really that there needed to be a team approach so that we could all work to support these kids, especially the diploma candidates, through the program. So the extended essay is Ms. Domain and Ms. Thornton. So specifically, they are to teach those students how to write the extended essay, make sure they keep track of deadlines, celebrations along the way, support them. But that's really their area of expertise. And also to work with the teacher supervisors, who will be overseeing the papers. CAS is specifically the Creativity, Action, and Service. And I can't praise Ms. Billy and Mr. Elsasser enough for the program they put together, because if you see in some schools, CAS is done very poorly. It's just, sometimes people replace it with like, community service. They have written a whole handbook. They have high expectations for the type of program that they want to see from students. They have students put together goals, and plans, and benchmarks. And so they're really helping those students reach those levels as they go through and to make sure that it's quality work that's being done, and that they have to do reflections along the way, and that they're reflecting appropriately. And they really would like to see the CAS, a community panel get together and look at the end CAS projects that are done. So they're really focusing on that. And then Mr. Lathrop and Mr. D. Gregorio are the overseers of the entire program. And it's a lot to learn. So I finally say, like, after probably 10 years of me knowing the IB program, there's somebody who now has surpassed my knowledge, and that is Mr. Mello. He knows more about the IB program than I do now, and that's saying something. Because I do feel like I know a lot about it. And Mr. Lathrop and Mr. D. Gregorio, it would be impossible for them to learn the whole program in such a short time to get it up and running. So that's why Mr. Mello's still playing an integral part. And then they're learning what the role of the coordinator is, and we really have focused on, and Mr. Mello's been working on them with this, supporting those 17 students and having conversations with them. And something else that I've really, you know, it's been, Mr. Mello and I, well, I switched offices back to the main office this year, and Mr. Mello's in guidance. But it's been great as he works with Mr. D. Gregorio and Mr. Lathrop, because now they're really working on, as those college representatives come into the school, talking about IB, and what do they offer, and what do our kids need to know? And really, really supporting the guidance counselors in their work on college admissions and the IB program. So they've been doing an excellent job with that. They've had so much passion, and I'm really a team person, and it's been enjoyable to see all of them come together to really help get our students on track.
And just to add to that, so you understand like the hierarchy of the coordinators. Mr. D. Gregorio, and I'll just say this. You know, another reason why you want two there, especially right now where we're getting going. We like capacity, you know. For instance, let's say we only had one EE coordinator, and something happened to that person. You now need to have somebody else who has, you know, not a lot of experience whatsoever. If we had been doing this for 10 years, it might be a different situation, because you might have had other teachers that had acted in that role before. So we wanted to make sure that we had capacity, so that there was fluidity if there were any issues that came up. So if I talk about the hierarchy, Mr. Lathrop, Mr. D. Gregorio, what they've been doing over the last couple of weeks is meeting with, you know, they had a meeting with, you know, the CAS coordinators. And so they, you know, talked to them, and it was like, okay, what do we need to do to support you? Understand where they were at and what they were doing. And then they met with the EE coordinators, extended essay. There's a lot of acronyms in IB, so I apologize if I throw an acronym out there and everybody's like, "What is he talking about?" Anyway, so they're meeting with them to make sure that they have everything they need to move forward. And then I think it's, right now, November 21st, we have kind of like a celebration night planned, and then a parent meeting night, you know, for the whole entire community to talk to them about, you know, the IB program. Because I do think that our students are really starting to understand the IB program. I don't think the parents are. You know, so I think there's a lot of education that has to happen. I do get a couple phone calls, you know. It's starting to slow down a little bit, but I do get a lot of phone calls. And it really has to do with that, you know, the lack of understanding of the IB program. Because people are used to APs. And APs are just like, okay, I step into this, you know, AP class, and I take an AP test at the end of it. IB is much more involved. IB is much more involved in many different ways. So it really is a program, a diploma program that they're involved in. Even those that aren't part of the diploma program, there's all these other aspects of the course that are different than an AP course. So there's a lot of education that has to happen. So I would beg, implore these parents who have questions about the IB program to show up on the 21st. And we'll be sending something out next week to the community all about what's happening on the 21st. So, yeah, I guess that's, you know, my little update on this.
Just to emphasize, as you said, you know, like, oh, we're only putting in IB this year. I can't express enough how complex this program is.
No, that's what I mean, yeah.
It's, you know, every subject has internal assessments, everything is graded differently than AP. It's just, everything is spelled differently.
Getting so accustomed to major overhauls that this wasn't one, but it was. Right, right. You brought up the college, one of the questions that I got a lot when we were considering AP is, do colleges know what IB is? And if somebody's taking an IB course and not an AP course, just, you know, is the name just alone going to be rigor? What are you seeing when you're bringing, you're in that office now, when you're bringing in the college, do they know what this is?
So first of all, I know colleges know because on the Common App, there's a check mark, a box that says, "Are you a diploma candidate?" They definitely recognize that if you are in the diploma program, that's the most rigorous program you could possibly take. I would say a majority, definitely, of the Ivy Leagues, of the bigger schools, all recognize IB. The SUNY system, if you're a diploma candidate, you get all, was it 30 credits or 33? 30 credits in the SUNY.
You come in as a sophomore. You come in as a sophomore.
Yes.
Bard, Bard University, if you get a diploma, you come in as a sophomore, Bard University. And that's not the old Rochester, you know. There's a lot of information out there. If you go to the high school website, there's an IB link on there that brings you to a website that has a lot more information and links on it where you can see what colleges do for the IB. So, you know, although it might be new to Putna Valley, when you talk about higher education, it's not new to them. And it's obviously, it's a growing program, so they're all becoming much more involved in it or invested in it.
Can you tell us more about the reward school and how one becomes a reward school?
All right, I might have to ask Dr. Luft for more help on this, but the new E S S A, which is all the new requirements that schools need to meet for, to not be like, I guess, labeled by New York State as a failing school. It has attendance, suspension rates, different various things according to that. And so I believe it's because our attendance improved and as well as other factors that he might have to identify, but there were 562 schools, I believe, in New York State that were identified. And so this was the first time Putna Valley was recognized, which I was very proud of.
Thanks for putting me on the spot. I didn't have it all memorized, I looked it up real fast. So in front of me, it says it's the top 20% of schools in the state for ELA and math performance. And then it measures adequate yearly progress, how subgroups have done over the course of years. It looks at gaps, again, achievement gaps between subgroups, including low SES and students with disabilities, like that. And then it looks in sort of this, almost like a quality measure, which includes discipline data and attendance and other measures like that. So the total number was 155 schools.
Thank you.
That was only 155?
And that wasn't something we applied for, it just arrived?
Yes.
Or just was?
We earned it.
We earned it.
We earned it.
Thank you.
That's right.
The question, I have at least one adult in the building that I can go to if I have a problem. Do you know who answered this so you can connect those kids that don't have an adult or don't have...
So I did not collect email addresses on this, but what we're going to do at the next faculty meeting, and we did this two years ago and we're going to do it again. I had the clerical staff print off every student's name in the building on a sheet of paper and we tape them to the wall. Ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade, 12th grade, and then we do rounds. So find one student, you know, that you connect with or, you know, go up again, do a second round, find another student you really connect with who you think would come to you in the case of a crisis. So we go through all the faculty, we go through several rounds, and then at the end, we look at who's left on the wall. And it shows us all those students that we feel we don't know well enough. So it identifies it from our end, from their end, it doesn't.
Okay, thank you. And the Big Buddy Program, was that every ninth grader?
Every ninth grader was included in a group.
Okay.
So the groups, especially, we didn't want to match up individuals. We didn't want one senior to be paired with one ninth grader, that would be uncomfortable. So we paired each senior up with about six freshmen.
Okay, that's great.
Thank you.
So I just want to quickly commend, I know we had sort of quickly covered, but I'll remind everyone, IB, block scheduling, later start, and community lunch. Like, those are four huge undertakings. And I know you said that you're not doing anything new, but all four of those things are still happening. And I know you guys work very hard to make them better and better each day, so I wanted to recognize those efforts. And I want to, I want to make sure we put enough value on sort of the social, emotional piece of this and that when you come to the high school, students really enjoy being here. I actually walked in this afternoon and there was a student jamming away on the piano and I was on a phone call. And the guy on the other side goes, is like, "What is that, like, what is going on? What is that noise? It sounds like you walked into a concert hall." I go, "I did, it's just the lobby of our high school." And he was, I had explained to him, like, "Yeah, we have this big grand piano and the kids sit here and play it during the community lunch." But again, a colleague from another school district was very impressed that that's the type of environment we have here. So I just wanted to thank you both and obviously your staff for making this all possible.
Thank you. And of course, thank you, the rest of the administrative team and the board for their support because it's been, it's been wonderful. And we did, I want to add, have Carmel come yesterday with 15 staff members to look at our community lunch and our schedule because it's something that they are looking at adopting. And Somers, who had come last year, adopted a new schedule and community lunch this year. And Irvington, I think, is now looking at a community lunch. So it's kind of word is spreading, which is neat. But thank, I want to thank everyone.
I had gotten an email right before school started, or maybe right after October 1st, from the Haldane Board President and said, "We're asking all boards in the area for these following, the next four questions." And one of them is, "Have you undergone any building projects or initiatives?" I was like, in my head, I'm like, uh-huh. "Have you undergone any initiatives like later start time, community lunch, block schedule?" I'm like, uh-huh. All four questions we had done in the last four years. So I just called and said, "You just want to, let's just talk on the phone, I can't type all this, I don't have the time." So it was interesting. But all good stuff and all obviously important education initiatives because they're being considered around the community.
And really do, I want to commend the student body because they are so warm, friendly, they want to have relationships with us, they want to feel like they're a part of everything. It's just a really nice feeling in the building.
That's great.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I've lost the plot here. Here we go. Okay, so is that a revision policy reading?
We'll open it up on the screen. Yeah.
For saying goodbye to the high school for now.
So this family engagement policy is really a required policy in order to use our Title I funds. They require us to engage the community in certain activities, really collaborating with them on how we use our Title I funds. Title I funds, right now, we use for a lot of our AIS services. So, you know, like, for example, I've met with the PTA and I've met with grade level people, I've met with Jeanette and, you know, really just talking about how we use these funds, what we can use them for in the future and just really collaborating and engaging the community. So it's a required policy. I think you did the first reading last time when I wasn't here. I was out at another event. So if you have any questions, certainly let me know, but it's a pretty standard policy.
Have we had a Title I audit?
We are under a Title I audit right now. This is, this is one of the things that they recommended, was that we just update our policy, really to come in line with ESSA a little bit more. So we changed a few things and, but again, it's a pretty standard policy.
And just, we hear the, we are living in an acronym world. ESSA is, I believe, every student succeeds act, which replaces no child left behind and is much more comprehensive. Okay.
Thank you.
So I always, Miss Khan, what do we do now? If we, we can now adopt it in a resolution?
We have...
That's what we're doing, right, that's what I thought, okay.
Except the second one.
Okay. Any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you. So are you going to let the new students go first and give their superintendent report? And give their report?
Nope.
Okay. Sorry, girls. Go ahead, superintendent, then give your report.
So the only reason I let them go first is because I want to first recognize them in my report. So I want to begin by recognizing our new student representatives to the board. Swear the opportunity to meet with Brianna Ricky and Julianne Santos Rito today. Mr. Scampoli, the advisor, the student council, was nice enough to buy lunch, so pizza usually gets me into a meeting. We actually had a great conversation, we talked a little bit about the expectations for the year and they both seemed very eager, so we're happy to have them at the board table with us this evening. And they'll have an opportunity for their update very shortly. So this week, as many of you may know, or as referenced by the cupcakes in front of you, is Board of Education Recognition Week. So we have a proclamation up on the screen from the governor, I'll spare you the time of reading it all, but I do want to take this opportunity to thank the members of the board for your dedicated service, the hours of work you do without compensation, and certainly for your tireless efforts to support the entire Putna Valley Central School District and all of its students. I know it's not an easy job, it takes you away from your time and your, and your real jobs, but I wanted to take this opportunity to again, thank you all for doing a terrific job on behalf of all of our students. So we have some certificates.
And Mrs. Parmley is actually at a Board of Education conference even as we speak, so she's living the board world. Will we get her a cupcake? I think we need to get her a cupcake.
She has one.
Get a shirt.
I want her to come home with a stale cupcake, so she's got to get one.
Thank you, John.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So I recently attended a meeting of the chief school administrator, chief school administrators, which is the superintendents from the region. And we spent a full day talking about equity, cultural diversity, and social, emotional wellness. There was a lot of conversations around best practices and current issues. Some superintendents got up and did some ignite sessions and presentations, and I found it to be a really informative day and brought a lot of good information back to Putna Valley. I also went to the JCK Foundation presentation. When you put that number of high school students in the Performing Arts Center for a presentation, your first year is that people are just not going to be paying attention, they're going to be talking. About 10 minutes in, you could hear a pin drop in that room. It was such a powerful message that was being delivered. So I wanted to again, thank Dr. Jerry and JCK Foundation for coming out and sharing that important message for our students. I also attended the Ziconic Overpass Meeting and Groundbreaking. I'm actually in the, in the process of preparing a letter that'll go out to all staff and then eventually to the community about different construction projects. But this one I know is very exciting. I shared during the, I got to make a little speech during the groundbreaking and doing a little bit of research. We have up to 16 times a day, buses cross the Ziconic State Parkway, which I found amazing. But when you consider the buses for the regular school day, buses for BOSI's, buses for special programs for private schools, for all of the late bus runs, there's a lot of times that our bus drivers use a tremendous amount of skill, patience, and maybe just a little bit of luck to cross Ziconic State Parkway, four lanes of high-speed traffic. And again, that happens up to 16 times a day, carrying over 100 students. So this closure will obviously impact us, but we understand the return on that pain we'll have for a few months will be safe passage for students of Putna Valley who live in Roaring Brook Community. So we're very excited about that. The left-turning lanes are now closed, southbound and northbound, so there's a detour for those who have to go there, but we can still cut straight across. And we anticipate the crossing being open until May of 2021. And then they've shifted that timeline, originally it was going to be this spring, so now it's the following spring. And they anticipate that closure being three months, May, June, and July. And then they, at which time, they hope, they plan on opening the overpass. So not this summer, but the following summer, they anticipate having the bridge in and buses traveling over for the following school year. So it's very exciting. They also are going to begin blasting, beginning this Wednesday, we've been notified, between 10:00 AM and 2:00 PM. And during the times in which they're blasting, they'll close the Ziconic State Parkway in both directions at the estimate for 15-minute intervals. I recently recorded a new episode of Inside Putna Valley Schools with Eric Gross and we had a special guest, was Jim Witt, who runs the Hope for Youth Foundation. I just want to encourage people to check out the video and to certainly consider supporting that foundation, who gives a lot of money back to the students of Putna Valley. They, they support our after-school Homer Club at the middle school, is one of the many things in which they support. Last evening, I attended a perfect placement presentation, which was a presentation geared for students interested in pursuing sports into college. It was really interesting, the presenter was very knowledgeable, and it was fairly well-attended event, so. And then, I know some are aware and I know that it's, it's been in the paper, but we've obviously had an issue with our volleyball team in terms of being disqualified from sectionals. I won't get into the long story here, but we feel strongly as if conflicting information led to the mistake. And we also feel even more strongly that regardless of the cause of the mistake, our student athletes had nothing to do with it and hence they should not be the ones penalized. But we've essentially exhausted every avenue and appeal that was at our disposal. So I guess we're still waiting for one final piece. But I think our commitment, Mr. Burrow, myself, is twofold. One is to ensure that the guidance is updated in a way so no other school finds themselves in the same position. So we were committed to making sure the conflicting information is corrected. And second, I'm committed to working with anyone in the 11 sections across the state who voted against changes to the regulations that would have allowed students to continue playing and move the penalty away from the students and onto the adults who are responsible for it. So this past summer, that revised penalty was brought up for discussion by the state Public High School Athletic Association and was actually voted down 6 to 5. So I'm going to do whatever I can in my power to make sure that that is brought up for vote again and that all districts, all sections who voted against it, understand what it's like to sit in my seat, to walk into a gymnasium full of student athletes and explain to them that of no fault of their own and after years of practice and sweat and tears that they are no longer, they're not allowed to continue because of an adult mistake. So I certainly think that's an easy fix and students should not bear the burden of something they have no impact on. So that's what we hope comes out of this. We've begun our observations in the buildings. Myself, I've been in four classrooms at the elementary school within the last couple of days and I continue to see tremendous lessons and really just observe some fabulous teachers. And that's it. I'll turn it over to my student representatives.
Thank you. Before I start, I just want to say it is an honor to be able to sit here with Julianne and to... Before I start, I just want to say it is an honor to be able to sit here with Julianne and to represent the student body. You know, it's a long journey from freshman year, so it's quite interesting. So the student body has concerns over the, after, when we let out of school with the traffic and being able to be let out orderly without speeding. And just want to know if there was like, we have to figure out like a more organized way of being able to do that.
We were also concerned about speeding because the other day, me and my sister were walking into the building right outside and she almost got hit by a car because students are speeding and so are parents. So we were wondering if we could enforce more, like, have a little bit of a scare of a speeding ticket. And I know no kid wants to explain that to parent, to their parents, because I know I wouldn't want to. And we also think the community lunch is a great idea, but we need to discuss something about how the hallways can be kept clean because they're walking outside and seeing students leave their trays and food on the floor is gross and that's not how the school grounds should be treated. And students are also being very loud, so we need to work on something because some students in classrooms are taking tests and even though you shut the door, you still hear them screaming.
Yeah, like Julianne said, with the hallways being trashed, I personally love the community lunch. I think it's an amazing way to be able to catch up on homework, being able to, being tutored from other students and just being able to meet with your teachers. But it is, it's, it's disrespectful to the school in general that students have to leave their garbage on the ground for some reason. And I feel like it's not enforced as much to say like, hey, pick up your garbage, even though we are all, all adults and should be able to do that. But it's disturbing to have to reach down and pick up food that was chewed from another person.
Can I just, before you go on, I just want to say, we have been saying as a board for years, um, we want this role of our student representatives to be more than reporting the events, um, though that is of course important and letting us know when events are happening and how well they went when they did. But um, we really want to know, we can hear from the principals how things are designed, but people don't always know how they actually are executed until you're in the executing part, where you're doing it yourself. So I'm already thrilled that we have things to talk to you about after the meeting, Dr. Luff. But um, that's exactly what we're looking for. And we may want to add in a little piece of response to student concerns each, each, or student agenda or issues. Awesome.
I would presume that you've already brought these issues up or are going to bring these up with principals and the vice principal.
Yes, we did bring these up to Mr. Mello and we did speak to Dr. Luff earlier.
Yeah, the speeding is certainly a concern, especially we just started a meeting with the traffic safety, uh, about buses. We're concerned about our own parking lots, so it's great.
Well, everybody will need to go slower when we have the construction going on, number one. And number two, I mean, this is funny. I was at the um, Meet the Candidates uh, event yesterday. I was only here for a little bit for the superintendent of the highways. And they were talking about speeding in Lake Peekskill. I mean, there's, I mean, probably really not fun, but uh, we would have the ability, if we wanted to, to throw in um, speed bumps in the middle, the middle parking lot, because that's where the students are coming out of instead of the, the front parking lot. And that would definitely do some slowing down.
More present, more adult presence dismissal. I know we're pretty good about morning adult presence, but you know, afternoon adult presence. Anything else for you?
Nope, that's it.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you so, so much.
Dr. Luff, I'll just give you guys an update on three things. The one is, um, just want to put a reminder out there that MAGMA, uh, our, our students, our uh, Sunday morning from 9:30 to 11:30, our high school students work with um, some of our students with disabilities. And it is just an empower, talk about empowerment and talk about um, commitment that our high school students and, and our families have um, every Sunday from 9:30 to 11:30. So please get out and, and support our program. Um, I also know that um, two weeks ago for the board meeting, I went to uh, the Westchester, it was hosted by the Westchester School Boards Association. Um, it was all on social emotional health and what different schools were doing. And um, it was really nice to participate and to hear what other districts are doing. Um, and really how we've aligned and, and I'll be presenting it at some time, probably in November, on our social emotional curriculum and the alignment we're doing. Um, but it was nice to, to get the, to hear other districts and what they're doing and boots on the ground. And um, so that was, it was a great honor. And then um, the third thing was, oh, uh, I attended a Niasba Conference, which is the local personnel administrators. And I think that, you know, really what I want to give you a heads up on is this new law that the governor signed on harassment. And um, really taking what used to be uh, just sort of sexual harassment defined, really now broadening that to a harassment term and really lowering the standards. So they used to, um, it, your complaint used to have to be substantial and like, over a long period of time. I don't remember the exact words, but it was pretty significant. Um, that bar has really been lowered. Um, it's really in response to the Me Too movement, um, sort of a continuation of that. Um, so you know, Ms. Mistrater and I will certainly um, meet with Dr. Luff and really how we're going to uh, you know, have, help our faculty and staff really understand um, the new defining terms and uh, the new standards. Um, and we're sort of rolling it out. But basically, it's about culture and about just really respect and, and how we sort of conduct ourselves. Um, you know, and, and again, I think that it really, it's going to change the way people look at, at harassment. Um, so once I have even more information, I'll certainly do a presentation to the board as well.
So you, you reminded me, I had um, I've been in MAGMA a couple of times, but I brought my, my younger son, Jakey, on Sunday to it. And he was out there playing around and, and kicking the ball and, and having a great time. And it, it's just an amazing thing to see our students and how well um, they interact and how caring they are. And I've already pegged a couple of students that are future teachers just by watching them out there. You can tell. Like, I don't know what you're majoring in, but you're going to change. But my kids have very busy lives and they do lots of things. And it'll, it'll, I'll never forget that evening after football games and everything else. My eight-year-old, the, the thing he said to me as, as I was going to, as I was putting him to bed, was that he thanked me for bringing him. And, and that really stuck with me. Like, he didn't, nothing about football, he thanked me for bringing him to MAGMA and asked if we can go back again. So it was really um, a, a powerful experience even for an eight-year-old. And it was, it's just an amazing program. And I, I want to commend everyone who's involved in, in starting it and those who are involved in keeping it running. And just the sheer number of students that volunteer their time to be there to make it happen.
That they're up and out on a Sunday morning at 9:30 sharp and just so committed to the, to the kids. And they don't want to disappoint the students that they work with. And, and I have to say, it's become such a community for parents. And I think that we don't realize, or you don't realize in your day-to-day life that, you know, for parents with, students with significant disability, it can sometimes be a really lonely place. And I, and that's what they talk about, is like, they really have built strong friendships and relationships with each other. And um, we have parents coming from, um, you know, my own nephew is going to join. Um, they live over in Mayapack. Um, we had people from Yonkers, we have people from all over that come on up for Sunday mornings because there isn't a lot of opportunity for students with significant disabilities to participate. Um, so it's been a great thing to watch.
And I'm going to add my, and thank you for reminding me too. Um, I did not wake up at 9:30 on Sat, on Sunday, but I went to the diner at about 11:30 on Sunday. And there were probably the families of eight or 10 of the students, the most adorable little white-shirt MAGMA, you know, kids, uh, at this whole little area. And because my son wasn't with me, I didn't have to worry about embarrassing him, I walked right over. And um, they, they could, everything that you've both said, they could not say enough things about basically how lucky I was to have the kids in the school district. Like, they, they weren't thanking me for being on the board, they were saying, you're really lucky. Because the kids you work with are incredible. And um, I remember how each year, I guess the original MAGMA are juniors in college, seniors in college now?
They, they must be seniors.
Seniors, they're seniors, yeah. They, yeah, they're seniors in college now. Um, I remember how much thought they put into who was going to replace them. And each year, they begin around now, identifying next year's student leaders. That's unbelievable forethought.
And we have a teacher who shows up almost every single week, Ms. Kinz, Ms. Boyle, sorry, I still call her Mrs. Kinzley, Ms. Kinzley. Um, and she got married a number of years ago. But Ms. Boyle, um, Mrs. Boyle is just uh, really dedicated and helps the students really work with the individual, the high school students, really gives them strategies, brings their picture symbols, brings um, ideas, suggestions, is always there. And I have to give her a shout out and, and really under, I hope she understands how much we appreciate her.
Okay, my computer died, so I'm moving to my, that's okay.
There's nobody from PTA, PTSA here, y'all?
No, but trunk or treat is Saturday at 2:00 PM. I thought it was Sunday, but it is Saturday at 2:00 PM.
Okay, and that's the Education Foundation, correct? Okay. All right, so we are moving on to new business.
Public comments.
Public comments on any of the agenda items, thank you. Okay, now, nobody. Moving on to new business, and it's amazing, we only have to say one and two tonight. Um, Mr. Burrow, start us off with number one.
Resolved the recommendation of superintendent of schools to approve longevity as per document number 8820, graduate course credits as per document number 8920, and in-service courses as per document number 9020 for salary purposes. Reference documents are attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number two.
Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the second reading of policy 1900, Parent and Family Engagement, as per document number 9220, attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So that now is our pol, that's adopted, okay. Uh, moving on to the consent agenda, number one.
Resolved to approve consent agenda items two, three, nine, as presented at the, to the board at this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
We're approving um, CSE and CPSC placements. We're appointing additional Title VI, VII, and IX officers. Uh, Ms. Doherty is already an officer and all these three, appointing three additional people to assist. We're appointing, or we're, we're approving the people who proctored the PSAT exams that were just recently given. We're approving the disposal of the following district's property, which is no longer, we don't longer need their surplus. We have no further use for a, a ride-on lawn mower and a sweeper, and they'll be going out for auction. We're approving winter coaches for the varsity and JV and modified teams for cheerleading, basketball, wrestling, swimming, gymnastics, ice hockey. For swimming, the gymnastics and ice hockey, these are joint teams with Lakeland Panis. And we want a special thanks to John Mahoney, who volunteers and works with our wrestlers and for Christine Stanny, I apologize, Stanny Onius, who volunteers and works with our cheerleaders. We're approving additions to the substitute tutelist. And um, we're approving a special-ed contract with the Charlton School, um, part of the Ketchum School District for one of our students with special needs. We're approving additions to our clubs and atroises. There's going to be an e-school gym, uh, show club. And uh, we're approving the class supervisor for the One Act Plays competition. And we're approving a new teacher mentor who will be working with our new teachers, but that we don't pay for. The Putnam Valley Federation teachers pay for that one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to public comment on anything and anything from the board?
I just got a quick one, in case you didn't hear. Uh, Putnam Northern Westchester BOSEs has three initiatives for the coming year. The first one, uh, they're going to start using dogs as therapeutic treatments for the people at, at the campus. Second, they're working in a partnership with Andrus to bring mental health services to the students down there. And that's something that, you know, we might be able to benefit from. And finally, they're exploring a partnership with Pegasus Therapeutic Equestrian Center. And they're partnering programs at their middle and high school using that service there.
Anything else?
Um, the play, I'll be JoJo at this time, is um, November 8th, 9th, and 10th. And I believe tickets go on sale tomorrow and the play is Almost Mean.
Do we have a visitor, Dr. Wilf? Will she be coming since she is almost mean? I hope she, I hope she comes in.
I want to know, uh, Dr. Luff, did you get a box of dirt or your shovel from the uh, groundbreaking?
Here we go.
Very disappointed to report I did not get a hard hat or didn't, did not let me keep the golden shovel. I didn't even stick any dirt in my pocket. I'm hoping, I'm hoping for better things when we break ground in our own facilities projects. I might just run away with the hard hat and the shovel.
And I forgot to tell Mr. Mello and Dr. Terry, I have a piece of the Berlin Wall. My sister went in 1990 and took a piece, so it's in a place of honor in our library if they would like to share. But it's so interesting that all it is, is an ugly piece of concrete. You'd think it should be this momentous, oh my God, it's the wall. And, you know, they kept families apart for years and years and years. Um, and it's not. It's just, it looks like something you would kick out of your way, you know, on the floor. So I'd be glad to bring my piece of the Berlin Wall into the high school.
You had mentioned regarding, um, Brad, well, Roaring Brook and Putting Street, um, the 16 buses and how many students we have driving back and forth.
Yeah.
So it's just, it's scary, you know, driving on a regular day, so I can't imagine being a 17-year-old and doing it.
And add the ice and the weather conditions and how narrow it is. All right, I, if there's nothing else, I'd like to resolve to convene an executive session for two matters of collective negotiations pursuant to Article 14 of the Civil Service Law, the Taylor Law, after which time no further business will be conducted.
Second.
Uh, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Happy Halloween, folks.
Happy, oh, that's right, happy Halloween, happy November. Good night.